This is the Bennington Select Board meeting of, I'm looking for the date, Monday, September 25th, 2023, on the third floor of the fire facility. And I am Jeannie Jenkins, and I have the pleasure of chairing this board. And I'd like for my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Gary Corey.
Good evening, I'm Jim Farrell.
Hi, Tom Yellen.
I'm Jean Conner.
I'm Ed Woods.
Thank you very much. And also with us tonight, we have Stu Hurd, our town manager, Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes every single meeting, and Josh Boucher, who films us every single meeting. We thank Cat TV very much. So let's start as we usually do with the pledge of allegiance. Jim?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. And then Tom, would you please read our town vision statement that guides our work?
My pleasure. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right, so next up is the consent agenda. And because we had varying people present, I'm going to break the minutes apart, if that's okay? Could I have a, for the purpose of discussion, could I have a motion to accept the September 7th minutes? Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any discussion on the September 7th meeting, which was an executive session? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That sounded like everybody. No. And then, let's see, except any abstentions? One abstention, thank you. There's a reason I was doing that, wasn't there? Okay. And then, could I have a motion to accept the minutes of September 11th? Second? Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or opposition? Okay, perfect. Okay. Now, could I have a motion to accept the warrants and licenses? Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Any discussion? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that was unanimous, yes. All right. With Sarah absent. All right. Thank you very much. Next up is public comment. We have several folks. Let's see. Remind everyone that we, this is three minutes time to comment. It's really not a time for discussion, it's time to share information that is useful to all. And we have a timekeeper, and Ed will let you know when you're 30 seconds away from your three minutes. All right. So let's start with Donald Washburn. And what we do now, Donald, just so you know, is instead of saying "public comment", please write what you're going to talk about, so we can announce that. I'll write it in.
Well, I just really want to talk about the Ben High-
Well, start by introducing yourself and what town.
My name is Donald Washburn, I live in Bennington. I'm concerned about the Ben High project and the homeless project that's being, I guess, you know, is going to come to fruition eventually, I don't know when, but I'd like to hear more on it. Problem is, is when you come up here for public comment, a lot of times, you don't have all the information from the select board to make a public comment, you know? So I'd like to hear from the select board, and then I could have, you know, I can comment on it, you know? I mean, right now, I don't know where they're at with this budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will say that we now have had five official public meetings on Ben High. The last one, was it last meeting?
Mm-hmm.
The last meeting. And all of the information is available on the web. If you have a need for assistance in getting on the web, the public library can help you access the site and access that information. But it is also the packets. I don't know whether the public library holds on to the packets each meeting. I'm hoping so. We probably should ask that question.
The meetings are also available to watch-
That's true.
-on the Cat TV website or YouTube. So there are many, many ways to get all the information.
Okay. So we do, we have been doing quarterly updates on the Ben High project. So the last one was just the last meeting. In terms of working on homelessness issues, we also have periodic updates, and you are in luck because we have someone with us tonight to share information. Okay? All right. So, but that's a very good reminder, and I thank you, Donald. Next up, let's see, how about Nancy White, petition update?
Nancy White, Bennington. Over 300 signatures have been gathered for the Ben High petition. Another 185 are needed by Friday. Citizens can sign it at Martin's Mini Mart on Main Street, or contact me, and someone will get you a petition. The select board held their first Ben High meeting 18 months ago. At the meeting, a tremendous amount of information was withheld. This lease-to-purchase agreement is a legally binding contract. Our officials failed to explain many of the details. They authorized Stu Hurd and Chris Gilbert to sign it that night. That night, the select board knew. Chris Gilbert would not only get our town senior center building, but $1.1 million was also included, and this was never discussed. Mr. Gilbert was supposed to have had the gym done at the Ben High by the summer of 2021, and our officials knew that. This is our 2020 town report. It came out in early 2021, and Shannon Barsati said the gym would be ready for the public to use in the summer of 2021. Ask yourself, why would our officials want Mr. Gilbert to get the senior building and $1.1 million when he failed to uphold his end of the bargain? The other issue everyone should have is page two of this agreement. Our officials were required to put this in here. It says, within 90 days of the lease being signed, officials had to give the public notice that we had 30 days to sign a petition. If 5% of the citizens signed the petition, the Ben High project would have been placed on a ballot. If the voters had said no, that would have ended the Ben High project. Officials had 30 days to return the building to Chris Gilbert. This was never explained at the meeting. Stu can talk in his manager's report about how they let officials or let citizens know. I think many people would have wanted to hear all of the information and costs before we were able to get a petition. But our officials wanted to get the building before people knew what was going on. My goal by getting the signatures is to force our officials to explain the real costs of the Ben High to the Bennington taxpayers. So please get out, sign the petition, we'll force officials to explain these costs because they have not, and then the voters will decide. Chris Gilbert shouldn't get the senior building, and I don't-
Nancy, you have 30 seconds.
I don't know how this will impact the Ben High project altogether. Thanks.
Thank you, Nancy. I want to remind individuals that anyone can get up and make public comment. It is often opinion, it isn't necessarily factual. And I would suggest that you go to the website, and you will see exactly how the building is being purchased, and the role that the transfer of a senior, of the building that currently houses the senior center and Meals on Wheels figures into those costs. The manager does have information in the manager's report later on, so if you want to hear more information about that, you can certainly do that. All right. Next up, how about Lorraine and Jack to talk about Bennington Community Cafe?
Hello. Lorraine Donatelli, Bennington. I am a co-organizer of the cafe. I've often likened it to raising a child. Nurture it, you know, you give it what it needs selflessly. And when you get overwhelmed, you rely on your family members, our amazing volunteer staff, and community organizations that have stepped forward to assist in a variety of ways. We have seen the cafe flourish. It's amazing what people are offering to do, the commitment they've made. Our volunteers, our core volunteers are ten strong on any given week, and sometimes more. We've added so much more to the program with music and art. We've got clothing out there that changes with the seasons and life essentials, harm reduction kits. We have all kinds of community connection happening, and we're watching relationships form between cafe guests, volunteer staffs, musicians, and with one another. We're seeing people come eagerly, the numbers are increasing, and it's to where we're 50 a week, most weeks, and it's not all the same people, but they keep coming back. So trying to imagine what it would be like if they all came on the same Saturday, how we would even manage it. So we're really grateful for everything the community has done so far, and just want to mention, it doesn't take a lot. Everybody contribute a little bit, and we get a lot done. Thank you.
And I just want to add two quick things. So Lorraine mentioned all of the growth and the flourishing. This is a brand-new program that just started in January, and as of this past Saturday, we have now served over 1,000 meals just since the program started, which is a big milestone for us. And with the growth in numbers, a lot of those meals have been served just in the last few months. I also wanted to talk about something. This happened a little bit after a cafe session, but part of the mission of the cafe is this knowledge sharing, and it was a major learning moment, I think, for us. And that is, that shortly after the cafe session, we were cleaning up, someone came out of the area next to GBICs and said, "We need Narcan, we need Narcan." And because we were there, and we have harm reduction bags, thanks to Margay, we were able to hand it off, they went over, and quite literally, someone's life was saved because of that. So this is not to talk about that particularly, but just to mention that because someone is currently struggling with substance use disorder, that doesn't tell you anything about the life they had before that point necessarily, and it certainly doesn't say anything about the life they could have beyond that point. So saving that life in that moment, you have no idea what that could mean in five, 10, 15, 20, 30 years, because recovery isn't possible if you're not around to recover. This is just to say, Narcan is easy to use, and thanks to Margay and Turning Point, it is easy to access. I encourage everyone to carry Narcan with them and to learn how to use it. It is a nasal spray, it's available over the counter, and it's available from Turning Point. The more different places that Narcan can be accessed in the community, the more lives can be saved. And anyone in the community can learn how to use it. And anyone in the community can choose to have it available in their business or in different places. So the more different places it can be available, the better. And because there was Narcan in the right place at the right time, a life was saved on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Margay, I have some at home. Does it expire?
It does.
Okay.
There's an expiration date on the box.
I'll have to look at it, okay.
You should probably pay attention.
Okay, thanks.
Good question. All right, let's see. How about Steve Golden to speak about traffic sign?
Yes, good evening. Steve Golden, 215 Benmont. This is across from the farm stand, and everybody who's been through that area knows how congested that's been. A week or two ago, I sent Ed the video I took of the most recent car accident there. And years ago, I had the highway department, I asked them to put up a blind drive sign just before the bend. And they put up a little sign that said, "Blind drive ahead," probably did nothing. But I think it's to the point now with the congestion there and all of the activity there that a little bit more of a signage should be done. I see the stop signs that are lighted with LEDs, solar-powered. And I'd like to think that that might be of some help just before the bend. A lot of these drivers, you know, these are some crazy people out there, will see the bend coming, and they'll speed up because they know they got the straightaway. But with the farm stand, this is more of a problem during the summer. But it's also a problem in the winter, because I have tenants, and they pull out of my parking lot there. And if it's a little slick, it's a little tougher to get traction. And if somebody is speeding, there was an accident years ago, 10, 15 years ago, I guess, and a woman miscarried because of the accident. But I think something needs to be addressed there, and I invite everybody to look at that a little more carefully. I think something needs to be addressed there. I really do. There's another accident about to happen unless something happens. Okay? That's it?
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep. So Sue, if you would add it to your street list. This is actually a very useful way to learn about, yeah, places that are problematic in town. And then, last but not least, Jean, with S-October.
Jean Conner, Bennington. This is on behalf of Kelly Carroll. She couldn't be here tonight, so I am delivering this message on her behalf. Some of you may remember, S-October is an annual event here in Bennington, and it's a campaign to collect new socks for the unhoused in Bennington County. In 2021, we call it, or she, they, collected 2,400 pairs of new socks. In 2022, they collected 1,300. So for 2023, while socks are the main focus, they're also accepting donations of new hats, gloves, mittens, long underwear, and boots to benefit the Project Alliance Community Outreach Program and the Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless. These items will be distributed with the socks. So if you're interested in donating, look for the S-October collection boxes at locations in Bennington, Arlington, and Manchester during the whole month of October. It's, they have a cute little saying, "Share a pair to show you care." And I'm going to go through the locations really quickly. If you need more information, you can probably contact the police station. So the locations, there's eight of them in Bennington. The Police Department, the VFW, American Legion, UCS, Turning Point, VSECU, which is the credit union, Glow Lounge Tanning Salon? I don't know where that is.
It's on Main Street.
Main Street.
Where is it?
On Main Street.
Main Street, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, right. And CAPA at Bennington College in Manchester. You can donate at their police department or their VFW. In Arlington, the Baton Hill Valley Health Center. And there's still room for more. I don't know what she meant by that, but-
If you would like-
More locations?
Uh-huh. Just contact her.
Contact Kelly, okay. Sorry, that was a little crazy, but-
Sorry. Great, thank you. All right. Anyone else? Yes, Jonah.
Hi, I'm Jonas Pivak, the Communications Coordinator for the town of Bennington. I just wanted to note that at the last meeting and at prior meetings regarding the Ben High redevelopment project, we have the Ben High. The old building would no longer be needed. The value of the building will help go towards the cost of fitting up the new senior center. And the property, which would then be vacant, can be redeveloped for private use and would then be returned to the tax rolls. Whenever a sale of town-owned property is contemplated, a publicly warned notice must be given to the public. So when there was a revised lease that came out from our last meeting, that public notice, which had been done 18 months ago, was done again regarding that possible sale. So to be clear, that if the Bennington, Ben High redevelopment does not proceed, and the senior center does not move, then there is no sale being contemplated. And I think we have been very clear about that. Likewise, the lease that was held up earlier has been on the town's website and provided to people that have asked for it. And I think the claim that the select board hasn't been upfront about what it says and its contents is incorrect. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonah.
Thank you, Jonah.
I think it's also the case, though, that the senior center and Meals on Wheels will be moving. So that will be an empty building. So. Okay. Next up, really happy to have Margay Diamond with us tonight. She's going to give an update on outreach for unhoused individuals and also individuals using motel vouchers. Yes?
Great, thank you. So I'm Margay Diamond. I am the Executive Director of Turning Point Center in Bennington. I also happen to be part of Project Alliance, which is really what I'm representing here today. Project Alliance, just to remind everyone, is an effort within Bennington to connect all of the social service agencies, town and local government, police, rescue, all of the entities together as one cohesive group. And our overarching goal is to reduce harm in the community. It takes a lot of different forms. Substance use is one piece of that puzzle. It's not the only piece, right? So as we look at ways that we can approach our community in a compassionate way and seek to engage in activities that will help reduce harm, one of the most obvious things was the folks who are being housed right now in motels and who we know are, many of whom have been extended until April, but the state's financial assistance for those in the motels ends at the end of March. So we have a limited amount of period of time to get with those folks and make sure they understand what the new state regulations are. Our team on outreach here in the community has consisted of Turning Point, BCCH, which is the homeless shelter, AIDS Project, and United Counseling Service. So all of us together have been collaborating and going out twice a week. We have been joined at the hip with the Agency of Human Services that is primarily responsible for having field workers interview people individually to get them screened and on the coordinated entry list, right? Which is the first step for trying to get them some permanent source of housing. Now, the bottom line is, we're not going to get everybody housed by April. We're just not. We don't have enough inventory. So I don't want expectations to be like, all this work is to make sure everybody has a place to be at the end, because it's just not realistic. You know, the last stats I saw were the state of Vermont has now the second highest homeless rate per capita, next to California. We are about 40,000 units short of what our population demands now as a state. So this is not just Bennington's problem, it's a statewide issue of inventory. But we at least have to go through the steps and make sure that folks are complying with what they need to do to stay until the end of April, or the end of March, sorry, April 1. And that is that they have to start paying 30% of their income to the motels. They have to be actively engaged with a social service agency. So whatever they have stated as their primary need, it could be, of course, someone engaging with Turning Point around recovery, but it could be someone who has a chronic care issue and needs to connect with VCCI. So there are a number of different connection points. We don't care what it is, but they need to be working on something with someone. So we have spent the last, I don't know, month and a half going out with the two nurses/social workers that were hired by the Agency of Human Services to do, perform those functions. And it was great, because they were traveling nurses, they were from, one of them was from Las Vegas. They swooped in, and they did a really incredible job of getting those screenings done, which takes a lot of time, and there's a lot of traveling involved. But it was clear they're not from here. So when people had questions like, "Oh, I lost my social security card," or, "Oh, I don't have my food stamp benefits anymore," or whatever the issue was that would come up, our team was right there to say, "Here's what you need to do. Here's who you need to connect with." So it was a very nice partnership in getting that done. Those folks have now departed, and Adam Sansick, who is the Field Director for Bennington and Rutland Counties, is in the process of hiring two new people who he hopes to have for an eight-month period of time to get through the rest of this. So we are waiting right now on that collaboration, but we're still continuing to go out, as that group I mentioned, United Counseling Service, AIDS Project, Homeless Shelter, us. We're still going out and just checking in with people, dropping off whatever supplies we have. Hopefully, we have some personal care supplies and maybe a snack bar. But we're just trying to make, keep that visibility and keep a relationship going, because trust is a huge piece of what we need to accomplish here. So just to give you some stats on this, there are a total currently, and I just double-checked with Adam this morning, we have 133 households in Bennington County who are being put up in motels. That's 133 households. That is comprised of 165 adults and 93 children. Now, remember, when the first wave of folks exited the motels back in June, those were, quote, "able-bodied people with no children." So the vast majority of people who are left are people with disabilities and people with children. So we are running into things like, somebody got the letter, but they have literacy issues, and they're really not sure what they're supposed to do next, or what the letter means. So it's breaking down barriers at every level to help people understand what they need to do and to give them the support to move forward. On a positive note, 80% of the households have signed a consent form, which allows us to make the referrals and talk to each other. 50% of them have completed basic screening. And of that 50%, 68% of those have an active shared care plan. There are still 20% of those households that need to complete coordinated entry. And that coordinated entry piece is what gets them on the list for a Section 8 voucher. So there's still a fair amount of work to do. There is no hard deadline that we've been given by the state, just that we need to keep moving through these screenings and application process with folks. Yeah. So I think that what's a little interesting to me when I looked at the numbers is, I said 133 households, it seems like it's higher than when I, I thought it was like 117. And Adam clarified with me that there have been 31 new households added to the motel program since June 1. Added, meaning they are in there on general assistance, which is 28 to 84 days. We're hoping most of those people will kind of fall into the cold weather exemptions and be able to stay through the winter. Because these 31 new households that have been added in, which he said isn't really an unreasonable amount on a general rolling basis to see new households coming in and needing support, but it's like, on top of the households that we're already serving, it's a lot. So, and also, I think Adam noted that of the 31 households that have come in June, July, and August, and September, that are now added to that population, there's 23 children in those households. So that we really have a high number of families with children who are living in the motels, and also a high degree of disabilities, which makes it tough for people to access food resources and get to appointments and all those things. So we're doing what we can to come in and literally meet people where they're at and ask them to define what their most important need is, and then work collaboratively to make sure that we can get those connections made. The other thing I wanted to mention that's about Project Alliance is the community shower program, which is available at the rec center. That started several months ago, thanks to a number of different people making it happen. There are free showers available to people. All they need to do is go into the front desk and ask for the free shower program. They will be given a caddy with shampoo and soap and the basic necessities. I want to send a special shout-out to ACT. They have been supplying personal care things to the rec center and also feminine- They have been supplying personal care things to the Rec Center and also feminine hygiene products, which has been really awesome. And then lastly, on Project Alliance, there is a joint pilot program going on right now between Rescue and Turning Point. Some of you may have seen that a couple of months ago in the paper, that we were starting that relationship. It was a little rocky in the beginning, as we worked out some bugs, but it is working now. And we're getting about three referrals a day. And our, the distinction with the partnership with Rescue is that we are definitely looking for substance use, issues, but we're not just looking at overdoses. So in the past, response has been just focused around the overdose, but we would like to get ahead of it a little more than that. And Rescue seems to be really uniquely positioned going into situations to really understand what's happening, right? So if someone is calling for help because they have chest pains, but they notice track marks on their arm, or if someone is saying, I need help because my partner fell down the stairs, and Rescue gets there and realizes, we've been here twice before for the same thing, and there seems to be alcohol involved in all cases. So these are all warning signs and signs that some education and connection might be helpful before we get to the point where someone ends up in the emergency room department. There are about 40 to 60% of the calls that Rescue goes on, specifically where substance is involved, 40 to 60% of people refuse transport to the emergency room. So that's, that's the group that we're focused on. So I'm really happy about that. Information's flowing, and we'll have some more heard data in a couple of months when we have some, some time under our belt. Can I take any other questions?
Fantastic. Well, let's start with Select Board. Any questions, comments?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Do you know what the per diem rate is at the local hotels per room?
I don't. And it probably varies a little bit. I don't.
I heard a really kind of shocking number that I've got to call Montpelier on. I serve in the legislature, that, I mean, they were exorbitant prices.
They did reduce it. They did, they did, they did do some adjusting apparently recently.
Anyway, that's it. Thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you. Other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. So let me ask you the, probably the quicker questions first. I have three. When a child is unhoused with their family, do they stay in the same hotel so they don't have to keep changing schools?
Jean, they don't change schools.
Even if they move, they don't?
What happens is the school, the school system keeps them in their same school.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay. That was my hope. Can you tell if the substance use disorder incidence problem, however you want to word it, is improving, getting worse, status quo? Do you have a sense of that at all?
Nobody likes my answer. It, it's not better.
Okay.
Overdoses are on the rise.
Okay.
Statewide. Repeat visits to the emergency room are on the rise. A lot of this has to do with the contamination of the drug supply. So if you hear someone say, oh, I just use heroin, they're not even getting heroin anymore. Nobody's getting what they think they are asking for. Even cocaine is adulterated at this point. They're finding fentanyl in everything. And additionally, xylazine. So we all know that fentanyl is an opioid, and it's killing people, right? Because a teeny little gram of it can just, but the xylazine, which is called trank dope on the street, is a veterinary medication. It was never meant for human consumption. And we've been talking about this for a year, but it is here now. It's testing anywhere between 40 and 60 to 80% of the supply, depending on where you look. It's in everything. And what is that doing? It is sedating people pretty hard. They are reporting, drug dealers seem to have mixed it in because, A, it's not traceable, it's not illegal, right? So it was an easy, quick, cheap thing for them to throw in there. It gives the fentanyl legs, is what people are saying, meaning it kind of extends the high a little bit longer. But then they're knocked out unresponsive for eight to nine hours. And the worst part of it is, is that they're getting these open wounds, and not necessarily in an injection site. So, I mean, it's hard to think about these things, I know, but even people who aren't injecting are getting these boo-boos. So it's not just injection drug users, but anybody who's coming into contact with xylazine is getting these wounds. They're not making the association. And if they're left untreated, it is incredibly awful. People are having limbs amputated. We just had a client who spent six weeks in Bennington Health and Rehab with her legs bandaged because she had a bone infection. She could have lost her legs. So these things are real, and they're here, and they're making it more complicated. Xylazine by itself, again, is an animal tranquilizer. It's a veterinary medication. It is not an opioid. Therefore, it cannot be reversed by Narcan, because Narcan only works on opioids, right? You can't take someone who's very inebriated and give them Narcan. It doesn't work, right? Same thing with xylazine, but because everything's all bunged up together, we are saying absolutely administer Narcan, because at least that might knock off, you just don't know what the ratio is. Like, if there's a lot of fentanyl, your Narcan's going to work, and it's going to knock it off the receptors. But if it's dominated by xylazine, it won't have any effect. So we know that it's still worth trying, but we're running into a lot of challenges with the current supply.
I have one more question. When you were talking about getting the paperwork done, and it's so, it takes a long time, what are the barriers for, for, for getting the paperwork done? Is, you know, you show up and the people aren't there, they, they're hesitant to participate? What are the barriers?
Getting, finding people in their room, getting there at the right time, when they're there. People who don't have phones, so you can't, you can call the hotel manager, but it doesn't usually get us very far. Those are two of the biggest barriers. There's not a lot of refusal. They have to do this in order to stay, and they know that. I, I think also there's, there has been some capacity issues, right? So we're now going about a month without having field services folks with us, because they're trying to hire the next round. We are hopeful that Brock and Pathways are going to be taking these screenings and helping with the coordinated entry list. But there's some, been, you know, a little bit of capacity here and there, strains on those organizations too. So I'd say it's a blend of all those things. It just feels like it's going slower than it should.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? No? Questions from the community? Yes, please, come on up. So Margé, when I'm going to, Deb will come up, ask her question, and you'll stick.
On the hotel program, if I refuse to partake in searching for a place or whatever is involved with it, have you kicked people out for that? So what happens? I can continually not, not help and stay on the program?
So it's my understanding that no one has been kicked out yet. At the end of the day, there are a couple of things. One is, the motel itself has the right to terminate the relationship with someone if that person's not paying their 30%. That's on the motels. So there's that point right there. And then the other point is that I think we're just trying really, really hard to get all of these connections made and get rid of barriers before anyone has the, you know, a drop-dead deadline put down on them. But can they sit there and do nothing? No. This is the whole point of screening people and saying, you've got to be actively engaged, you've got to have some case management going on here. So Adam Sansick is the best person to answer any of those other detailed questions about, you know, when they might put a deadline on it and what's going to happen from the state perspective, but I can't answer that right now. Thanks.
Great. Do you have a question?
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation. Substance abuse, major problem in Bennington. A lot more than people think. And, you know, one of my concerns is, is that we don't have the finances, well, we have finances, but limited, all right? Because, you know, people, between going to a medical detox or residential facility or non, you know, a daily program, you know, it, it only can do so much. The other thing is the housing piece, because when people are stuck in a rut with their addiction and they don't have proper housing, they continue to just remain in their addiction. And, you know, people who don't know about substance abuse don't have a clue about this, you know? You could preach to the choir, but they, they'll tell you, well, you know, they did it to themselves. Well, you know, listen, I, you know, I've, I've never been a drug addict. I smoked plenty of marijuana, but, you know, but you can't. People need help. And my, my hope in Bennington is, is that we get to a point where we move past where we are. We can't remain in the same trenches that we're in right now. We need to look at other programs, other ways to assist people, because addiction's just not the only thing. Housing is a big issue, major issue. But I, I don't know, I don't know what the right answer is. I just hope that we stay on path and we stay focused.
Thank you. Nancy?
Would you have any information about the plans for the Bennington Health and Rehab Building? I heard bits and pieces a few weeks ago, and I was shocked there's been no public discussion.
Nancy, you want to stay on, on point?
I didn't know if they were aware of it because of the plans tied to it. The second thing, I believe Montpelier is still running the motel voucher program they started over a decade ago, which is separate from the voucher program during COVID. As I understand it, people can still come to Vermont from outside of the state, knowing they're going to be homeless when they get here, and get a voucher for a motel room. How can Vermont ever address the situation if we're going to continue to have people from out of state coming in here when we can't take care of the people who are here today? So maybe that's something Montpelier needs to look at, because they said they were stopping the program a couple of years before COVID hit, because I think it was costing triple what they had officially thought they were going to. And as far as, as finding solutions, I hope everybody understands.
Nancy, are these questions for Margé?
A question for, sure.
Okay.
Bennington cannot support four homeless shelters in our town. We have two. We cannot have everyone from Bennington County continue to be brought here. Are you working with Arlington or Manchester or other towns to get shelters open? Because Bennington cannot do it all by, by ourselves.
So thank you for those comments. I, I think what I heard and agree with is that housing first, right? That is a model that is accepted nationwide. It's pretty hard to get any of, any other needs met until you have safe, stable housing. And I think it's a bit of, I think some folks have felt like people who've been put up in the motels during this period of time have just had it really easy, and they've had free rent, and they've just been lolling around out there. But I got to tell you, the hotels charge the state a lot of money for those rooms. And I've been in those rooms, and they are filthy, they've had no housekeeping, they've not ever gotten toilet paper, they don't have, like, fresh air coming in, they don't have laundry facilities, sometimes they're broken, they don't get clean towels, all the things that you think of when you go to a hotel, they don't have those. They're not getting any of those amenities. So it has, and we have multiple times, I think Dane Whitman talked about this several meetings ago, said, we were stopping the program, and then we restarted it, and then we stopped the program and we restarted it. It's very upsetting to people, especially families with children. Where are they going to go? So they've been in this constant state of, like, panic this whole time. So this has not been an easy road for them. And I think that the number of people who are coming in, that I see anyway, and the numbers for Bennington, that are from out of state are very minimal. So while that may be a bigger issue in Montpelier, I don't know. The vast majority of the people here are Vermonters. And I don't know what the state's going to do about rules, you know, whether they're going to require residency rules or anything like that, Nancy. But for now, I think it's important for us to stay focused on our mission. And in terms of collaborating outside of Bennington County, that's something that Adam Sansick and the Field Services Group from Human Services will be addressing. Our task right now has been pretty focused on the town of Bennington. With the limited people and resources that we have, that's pretty much all we can handle right this second.
Yeah. And, and I will add to that, that this board sent a letter to the legislature for them to act on this session, discussing the fact that if, if there is not good transportation through the county, then what it means is that people need to be located near the services, which means they need to be in Bennington. So if we want to take advantage of housing throughout the county, then we need a better trans, we need more than one, you know, one route, one, you know, way to Manchester in the morning and come back in the evening. You need to be able to, to actually get to appointments in the middle of the day, or get to your workplace in the middle of the day. So transportation was a, was a, a big concern. The amount of stress it puts on all the agencies in, in the Bennington area, as well as town government, is really something to consider. It is, it is something that we do think that Montpelier should be looking at, and the legislature should be looking at. And also, the Barriers to Housing Act 250 has been a barrier to some housing in this area, and that is something that only the legislature can address. There was a fourth thing, and I can't think, remember what it was. But, you know, I think there are, there are reasons that, that everything is centered, that housing, motels are centered in Bennington, and that is because that's right now the only, you have to be close to the services.
Close to services, right.
Yep. So, so hopefully, we can, if we can spread out, if, if people could live in Arlington, or live in Manchester, or live in Sandgate, and still get to work and get to Economic Services, get to Turning Point, then that would make a huge difference.
Yeah, it would. Thank you for that. Jeanne?
I just want to thank, please thank you, and thank everyone who's been working on this tirelessly all these months. This is not easy work. This is, you must not sleep well at night. So take care of yourselves, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. I see another question. Don't go away yet, Margé.
I'm Mary Ellen Munley from, from Bennington. I'm not exactly sure how to ask this as a question, and I don't intend it to be something that is challenging in an, in an unproductive way to anyone. But I feel it needs to be said that we're all listening to this information, but where's the urgency in terms of not being able to accept the conditions as they are? It seems as if it's an emergency about the safety and well-being of a considerable number of people who live in Bennington. And it deserves, and they deserve, us as a community, seeing it as an emergency that we have to think about in new ways, and we have to think about more creatively. And I would very much like to see more conversation and more sort of responsibility for that. I'm not sure where it comes from, but we need to grapple with that. And I would hope that it is somewhere within And I would hope that it is somewhere within the purview of our select board to lead us in that direction. I know that there are restrictions on what authorities you really do have, or that anyone really has. But until we address that, and you help us to address it as a community, I think we will continue to hear reports, like the one that Margay gave us tonight, which is, it is completely unsatisfactory that we have these conditions in our community, and that there are people who are, you know, there are hundreds of people, as it was reported, and many, many children, who are living in absolutely untenable situations in this community right now. And we need to be called on to make it different from what it is now, and not to be satisfied that there are, there's a shortage of personnel, or that, oh my goodness, there's this, or oh my goodness, there's that. And we are all accepting those as acceptable answers. And that's my piece, is, you know, looking for where that leadership can come from.
Yeah, I think it is, it is, I wouldn't say that we're all just accepting. I think we're all very frustrated, and I think that we're doing a lot of nibbling around the edges. So extending the shower program, for instance, which has existed for, like, 30, 30 years that I know of, probably longer, but making that a free program and providing showers, it's helpful. It's nibbling around the edges. We're all aware of that. We know from the Ever Ready Study that we need 1,000 units of housing. That's everything from studio apartments to houses. That's the whole price point. I mean, you know, we, we do have, I think, a pretty darn good idea of the problem. And I do think that the purpose of bringing Project Alliance to fruition was to increase safety for everyone. And so, yeah, I mean, you know, but we don't have county government here. I mean, it's a different kind of structure than in most, in most states. So I think what we are trying to do, I don't know, I think you should come to the Project Alliance meetings, personally. I, they're, they're not, they are open, they're open meetings, they're just not totally well publicized, but they're open meetings. And I do think that, for all of us, this is a frustration, and hearing solutions is always helpful. So any thoughts about how we do stuff faster and better and more efficiently?
I agree.
We're all ears.
And I sincerely tried to say at the beginning, this is not something that I was blaming anybody about, or suggesting.
No, and I'm not seeing it as blame. Yeah, I'm not seeing it as blame, but I think it is, it's a shared, it's a shared frustration.
Yeah.
It's a shared frustration.
And I just have to believe that if, if there were more ways for all, for people to be able to work together, and more putting this forward as something that is a top priority for everyone in the community, that, that might help us to get past the frustration. Because that's what we have, that's the challenge, I think.
Well, suggestions are always welcome, so.
You got it.
Bring them forward. Yes, surely.
You made a good point, that there's not like a county structure here. But there is a state. We have Mr. Carroll here, and we have Mary in the back of the room. Do you have any suggestions for us to kind of give, you know, a push in Montpelier, something that we can do to change the focus? Thoughts?
Well, the thing that struck me that Margay said tonight, that I think, I don't know whether legislatively it would be necessary, but the question that I was going to have for Stu is that if these conditions exist in these hotels or motels, and is the, is the Health Department required to inspect hotels and motels, Stu?
Yes and no. Generally, the Health Department, the local Health Department, is more concerned about individual housing units. Now, the state created this problem, or this program, I should say, it's turned into a problem. If, in fact, the motel owners are not providing the basic services and needs that they are required to provide, then I think we need to get together with the state of Vermont.
By the state or the town?
Well, I think the state controls the dollars.
Okay.
And that's, that's where, that's where the hammer can come from.
Okay.
And I, I was surprised to hear Margay say that. There's no reason that these people shouldn't have the basic services that a normal motel owner would provide, someone who's renting a unit from them.
And do you know?
And they're not.
But we have seen, but we have seen complaints come in where.
We have handled some of those complaints internally at the town offices. But if it's, if it's system-wide, then it's a, it's a much bigger problem that, that may require a state solution.
And what fines can the town impose for these filthy conditions?
You have to go to, you have to take a property owner to court in order to get fines. It simply is too, too expensive and too cumbersome to try to get into court. Courts these days, since the, since the COVID pandemic, have been incredibly slow. They're incredibly backfilled. This idea that people get speedy justice is, is really not the case anymore. So you can't look to the court system to solve this problem. You have, I think, if this problem truly does exist, then it's going to take.
Legislative.
Perhaps some legislative push and local push, not only from Bennington, but from other communities, because we're probably not the only ones that are seeing it. But if these motel owners are not providing what they are supposed to be providing, then the state needs to step in.
Do you know offhand if the Health Department can impose fines?
They can impose fines.
They can or not?
Cannot.
Well, that's got to change.
Is Mary here? Yeah, so I think Mary would like to speak too.
Part of the problem is, this has been extended by the state, as well as to a degree by the communities, of the programs kind of half-limping along to do emergency service. I worked with a number of folks last year in order to, when it was decided in Montpelier that it was going to stop in November, which I thought was the most ridiculous time, to stop a program where you really didn't have some of the resources that you needed to move forward, to help those who truly need the help. So, but I said at that time to many of the different groups, and I'll repeat it here, this isn't the solution, having vouchers for folks to be staying in a one-room motel. And as we know, they're a disaster, and not clean, they're expensive. This program, it's an embarrassment to say, has cost the state over, I think it's now up to over $200 million. What we could have done with that money, to have really put programs in the community to help folks that truly needed help, is beyond me. And I said it to the folks I worked with last year, they just kind of wanted, no, and I shouldn't say just wanted, I think they were relieved that this, it was going to continue. But I said, "This is not the solution. The motel voucher is not the solution. And we've got to all be working hard in some way, because we can't do it this way. It's really a failure, and it continues to be." So, you know, I'm willing and wanting to, but it seems as though we continue to limp along. And I will honestly say, after the November was continued till March, and then it was April, and now it continues, I didn't hear a lot from too many people that were really, last year in November, very anxious about it. We've got to continue till we really find appropriate solutions for the folks that need the help.
So Mary, do you, I guess to Shirley's question, do you have any suggestions for the direction you think we should be going in?
Well, I believe we need to find housing. You know, I, I think, you know, I think of some buildings within the town, but we have to, as a state, well, actually federally, state, and our locals, need to all be working together to appropriately find what works best. And yes, there will be different things that will work differently for different communities, or cities, or towns, but we have to work together. I mean, we just are throwing, at times I feel, where feds are just giving us money and saying, "Do something with it." We've got to find solid solutions. And I don't have a, right off the cuff, something that's going to resolve this, but we can't continue what we're doing now.
Well, and I do, I mean, I do think, I mean, Bennington has, we have been working on housing for a very long time, and I do think that is one of the most exciting things about the Ben High Project. That's 40 new units, half of which are affordable. We also have two transition recovery homes coming online, which will be helpful. But I, yeah, I mean, anything you can do on the Act 250 front, I think to get rid of the barriers.
You're preaching to the choir. I've tried to.
I know, I know, I know. I'm begging. I'm not even, I'm begging at this point. And transportation, I mean, if there is a way to enhance what Green Mountain can offer.
Beg my fellow, my fellow legislators.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. All right. Other, thank you, Shirley. Other questions from the community? Other thoughts? I mean, we are very open to this. Part of the reason that we have wanted to keep this in the forefront, and keep the work of Project Alliance in front of the community, is because we don't want this to go away. And then in April, we're all like, "Oh, look at this. We don't have motel vouchers anymore. What are we going to do with all?" This is, if we knew how to solve this, we would have. But, but we are making progress, and encourage any of you who have thoughts about how to do things differently, or more efficiently, to please let us know. All right. Anything else for Margay?
I have a question, but it's probably more for Stu. So the fact that these hotel rooms are filthy, and that's really, really upsetting to me. And I'm thinking, I don't know the Health Department rules, when they can inspect, when they can't inspect, or, or any of that, but I guess, is part of the problem, the hotels are not functioning as hotels. They're functioning as people's homes. So the lines between what a hotel is and what a home is are blurred. So it probably doesn't fall under the traditional jurisdiction of the Health Department, and that probably should be waived at this point, so they can get in. And, and I don't know the answer. I don't know, you know, I know next to nothing about how these things work, but they're not functioning as hotels. They're functioning as people's homes.
Well, can you talk about the situations where Paul, Paul Danzaro has gone in? Yes? And what, what was his jurisdiction to go in?
Well, he is, he is the Health Inspector for the town of Bennington. And we have a deputy health inspector. They are also, our enforcement officers, our building inspectors, our permit folks. They will go in on complaints. We do not run an inspection program for motels. Generally, those are outside of our jurisdiction. The jurisdiction falls to the state of Vermont. But in this kind of situation, where you have people actually using a motel room as a residence, we will go in and work with the folks that are there, some of whom, let's be honest, some of whom do not keep house well. This is not all the fault of the outer society. But they should be able to receive the basic things that come with the rent that the state is providing. And I, I don't know that in every case, they're not, but we have all heard of the horror stories throughout the state, where motel owners are taking the money and they're not providing any.
Any services.
Any services. And when, when this program was re-initiated, Project Alliance and the collection of social service agencies and governments that got together, really took the new model seriously. And the fact that we're down to only 30, 20% of the folks we're trying to serve have not yet signed up, out of 133 households, that's real progress. Because that means that of some 105 families are now ready to move on, once housing can be found. And Jeanne, you're right, Act 250 is a barrier. The legislature took up the change this past year. The changes that they offered, Bennington already offers, they weren't substantial enough to make a difference. But we also have to remember that materials, construction costs money, a lot of money. And, you know, in order to build our way out of this problem, I think it's going to take certainly more than the $2 million that the state's already spent. It's going to take millions of more dollars.
And time.
It's going to take public and private investment. And we, we, as a community, and this falls back on the Ben High Project, we can't say no to projects that are going to create housing. We can't simply say, "We don't want them here." We are here, we are the center, we are the place where the social services exist. We have to expect that people, even if they're Vermonters, as Margay has said, they're not all Bennington Vermonters, but they may be Shasberry, Arlington, maybe Brattleboro. They're coming to where the services are offered. And, and so it puts extra pressure on those communities that have the services to provide the housing. And I, I think the governor is moving in the right direction. I would hope that the legislature continues to be proactive. But at some point, money will be the main issue. And it's a question of whether, frankly, the state of Vermont can afford to solve this problem.
All right. Shirley, please.
Just a suggestion, and, and I don't know who this would be, but is there somebody at the state level who's organizing this program? Not only the hotel voucher program, but maybe a bigger homeless thing, that could come talk to us at, at this meeting, or maybe even a separate meeting, that we could invite just to kind of educate people? And I think if you educate the populace, and we can reach out to our representatives and our senators at the state level, and, and voice our opinion about what we can do and what we can't do. Just a thought. I don't, I don't know how you roll that, and I'm kind of looking at Jim, and I don't know whether he can help me or Mary, you know, whether there's somebody we could bring in who would have more information that maybe we could influence.
Mary, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the places that I would suggest is Health and Human Services in Montpelier.
I was going to try to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any, any suggestions, Mary, on your part, world?
I'd probably say that housing is just ceiling. That would be a possibility, but he has been working on programs as well. It does have to be a coordinated effort. You know, right from state to the feds, to the state, to the communities, and have a flow of what's really going to happen silently in our community. And I wish there was a way that we could do from the private sector as well, because I hear this all the time, that some of the developers that come in are sometimes paying twice the amount of, for the cost of housing than we would if we had some of our own. twice the amount for the cost of housing than we would if we had some of our own construction folks in our community. So that needs to be looked at as well. You've got to look at all of these procedures and processes to work together to do the best quality, but in a reasonable price. Keep throwing money at things and nothing's, I shouldn't say nothing, there hasn't been progress in some areas, but it's not landing on the walls. So it's got to be a coordinated effort.
All right. So we'll look for that coordinated effort. We'll keep looking for it. And we'll be watching legislature.
I've got a question for, one final question for Margay. Have you gone to the health department when you've encountered these filthy, filthy conditions?
Please go to the microphone because you can't, Cat TV can't pick anything up otherwise.
So I think the question was, have I gone?
Gone to the health department when you've encountered these filthy conditions?
I have not. I've reported it back to Adam Sansick. I think everyone's pretty aware of where the trouble spots are. And it's probably not every single room at every single motel, right? But I've certainly, I've been out on outreach myself, so I've opened the doors and I've seen what's inside. Some people have been in there for three years, you know?
Well, when I had my food cart on Main Street, the health department didn't tell you when they were going to show up. Tom Hubble just showed up, but, okay. Sorry. When I had my food cart, we didn't get a warning by Tom Hubble to have things in proper order. He just showed up. And I'm wondering if the same can be done with the health department? Just go to these hotels where the problems are and have them inspect?
Probably have to increase their budget so they can hire staff to do it. They're really stretched thin.
I think that's a good suggestion, Jim. I'm not sure what to do about that, but I'll float it up the flagpole.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other?
Mary.
Mary, come, come up if you can. I hate to make you do that, but it's really, you're not captured on Cat TV.
You have to remember, Tom Hubble was a state inspector.
Right.
And that was the difference. But I, again, don't understand why local and state can't coordinate those efforts. That's disgusting that people are living in these conditions. And I hear it from my colleagues across the state that say, "We're literally going to probably have to bulldoze half of these buildings down because they're in such a mess now, disarray. It would take probably millions to redo a motel or a hotel based upon what has come from, from this program." So there should be a coordinated effort. I will reach out tomorrow, actually, to the Department of Health and see what they can provide as additional efforts down here. Because we don't have a Tom Hubble. I wish we did, because Tom was always right on it.
Good.
Jeannie, if I could just make one last comment here?
Go ahead.
State, the state inspectors who govern hotels, motels in Bennington do surprise inspections that come from a little bit of experience in that area.
And they're state.
And they're state.
They're state level. They're not local.
They are state level. Yep. Say it again, Jim?
You're not giving them a warrant.
Correct. That would defeat the purpose.
So maybe a question is whether, when a motel becomes all motel voucher driven, whether those same.
I'm wondering if they don't fall off the radar from that state hotel inspector.
I think we could ask for a hand.
So then it goes back to what we were saying earlier about, Jean mentioned this, they become residences. Who governs residences? It's local. We have a resource problem. This is something that we probably should talk about.
Yeah. So that would be, Mary, actually, it would be great if we could, if we could find out what happens if a motel is all motel voucher or mainly motel voucher. Do they get the same kind of inspection? Because there's no way that the town, that town staff of two could serve all the motels locally.
I'm taking an educated guess that if these businesses are registered with the Secretary of State as hotels and motels, not residences.
Right. They, yeah, they would have to be, right, to get the motel voucher. Right.
And Ed, are you aware of what fines, if any, the state can impose if you're not up to snuff?
Proud to tell you that I haven't.
Proud to tell you that I haven't experienced that, Jim.
I'm sure we're all glad to hear that.
I can certainly find that out.
All right. Okay. That's great. Thank you.
If, I have one more, I guess it's a question from Margay. If a person is housed temporarily in a voucher program and conditions are not acceptable, do those folks have a channel to follow, a method to get their needs heard? Are you familiar with anything that's handled in that area?
So just want to make sure I heard you right. So if folks aren't following the rules? No.
If you have a person housed under the voucher program and they are following the rules, they're, they're right along the program, but their basic needs are not being met by the motel owner, is there?
We hear about it when we show up. And that's why we bring personal care supplies with us and water, and we ask them what their priority is. We are asking people to define their own priority needs to us and not making assumptions, because it could be something as basic as I don't have toilet paper for my kids.
So, but you're not enforcement, right?
We're not enforcement at all.
Right.
Right.
It's an interesting problem. It really is.
This was kind of.
Thank you, Margay.
Yeah, Nancy, if you, if you have a question, otherwise, I think, just public, I think, I think if you want to do a really quick comment, but I think the, okay, that's fine. Anyone else? Yes, Debbie.
I have a feeling that there's no, I don't know if I should call it a contract or an agreement that is signed with these motels and hotels for these people that are put up with vouchers. I know some people that have stayed in a hotel because they had no place to live. They got one roll of toilet paper a month, and there was no housekeeping, there was no towels, there was no nothing. And there was, the housekeeping, none of that. So I don't know if I'm at this motel and they just don't like me, so they're not going to give it to me. I don't know what the arrangements are. I just feel that it should be more so in black and white, that if you're going to take this voucher, family, person, or whatever, these, you know, you know exactly whether they're supposed to get toilet paper, if they're supposed to get housekeeping, you know, exactly what they're eligible for.
Yeah. Margay, do you know the answer to whether there's a contract between the state in order to get the money?
I don't.
Okay. So is that another? Yeah. Okay.
I believe there is.
I believe there's some kind of contract.
I think when the program was, was reestablished, there was a definite move on the part of the administration to designate AHS as, as your lead agency, and they were the ones that were supposed to set up contracts with these motel units and owners to provide housing. So you had to sign up to get into the program as an owner of a motel, and I believe there is a contract.
So I'm wondering.
It should be able to be enforced by.
Yeah, I was gonna, I'm wondering if either Adam can get us the answer or come to the next meeting. It sounds like there are a lot of follow-up questions. That would be helpful.
Yes. We'll have Adam on the next.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Yeah, it's a different topic than the one that, that we're actually looking at tonight, but definitely important. Okay. So we'll put Adam on the next agenda. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That was very enlightening. More questions than answers, maybe, but that's always a good thing. So thank you very, very much. All right. And now we're going to move on to composting. And we have Allison Levy from the Energy Committee to make a proposal to us.
The Energy Committee is asking the Select Board to rescind the fee of $1.25 per gallon, which is currently set for disposal of food scraps for composting. There is a tremendous benefit to composting of organic material. On a national level, food scraps make up, I never totally trust these numbers, but 25% of the organic waste going into landfills. I actually have seen numbers that suggest that organic materials are more like 60%. When organic materials go into the landfill, they create methane. And methane is, if not the worst, one of the top worst materials for greenhouse gases. It traps heat, I read someplace, 28 times more than CO2. I mean, it's phenomenal. So composting, the reason that the Energy Committee is concerned about composting, the reason the state is, is first of all, to cut the amount of waste going into a landfill. Saves, saves the landfill for other stuff. The Energy Committee is specifically looking at this in relation to energy and greenhouse gases. So it saves, the numbers aren't consistent, partly because it depends on your style of composting, but it saves more than 50% of greenhouse gas effect to compost versus landfill. So we're operating from that basis of this is really important for cutting on a national level, but also on a local level, of cutting our contribution to greenhouse gases. Interestingly, it does, it is more expensive in Bennington to take compost to the landfill than it is to take your trash. We found this out when we went to take ours. The, so our concern is that that fee actually discourages, it's actually a pretty high fee, if you think about, I mean, we compost on our property, so we're only, we were only, we don't take it now, we put it in our trash. We were only taking things we couldn't, sorry. We were only, we're only composting things that, that we couldn't put in our onsite compost. We stopped. And I've talked to other people who said the same thing. They stopped because it was so expensive. We want to do it, it's expensive, we don't do it. I don't know about people who can't, it's actually legal to put animal waste and things like that, I mean, like bones and cheese and things like that. You can put it in your trash if you compost on your property. I don't, I don't know if there are also people who aren't composting, who don't have onsite compost and aren't composting because of the cost, but I can tell you, we generate, I mean, it would cost us far more to pay for our compost than our regular trash. So, so we are asking the Select Board to rescind that fee in order to encourage people to compost everything that they can into the compost, and certainly at least what they legally are required to.
Thank you. Question, so we voted on the Casella fees, and the compost fee was part of that. We don't currently charge for paper recycling, cardboard, plastic, glass, and so, because it's a way of keeping that out of the, out of the landfill. So I think, you know, Allison's two prongs are, one, it reduces greenhouse gas emissions and, because methane is very potent as greenhouse gas. And then it also diverts more things out of the, out of the waste stream that's then going to have to be landfilled. Any, and I think we had informally asked Stu how many, how many, how much he thought we might be getting in revenue?
Fortunately, I didn't get that information. I'm sure it's available from Casellas to what we're generating on an annual basis from the $1.25 a gallon for compost, but I didn't get that information.
Okay. But I think for most of us that didn't know that there was a charge for compost, if you didn't declare it, you didn't pay it. So, yeah, so it's not clear. It's not clear whether, whether we've collected very much at all.
It is not clear whether, and it's, you know, from a, from a perspective of a, a family who attempts to compost onsite at home, I'm not sure I want my taxes to go to pay for other people who don't. And they're not. I think, I think we can say pretty assuredly that the majority of people are not composting.
And it's a state law.
And it's a state.
It's a state law. So we want to encourage composting.
I mean, the state has been very proactive in working with schools, institutions, as is the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance. We're very active in working with the major generators, and that is working fairly well. But I, I just don't get the sense that there are a lot of individual homeowners who are composting.
Okay. So we want to make it easy for them. Because it is, I mean, there's just, there's a, there's just a can there and you dump your compost in.
I can't argue, I didn't, I didn't get that information.
Yeah. No, but I'm saying, but we do want them to, we do want them to do this. And $1.25 a gallon is actually really expensive. Yeah. I don't know.
I couldn't hear what you were saying.
So a $1.25 is really expensive, and we do want to encourage composting because it is a state law. So I don't know. I'm strongly in favor of getting rid of this.
I heard from two different residences today, residents today, both taxpayers, not related to each other, on this topic, the compost and the brush fee. So it's interesting that, and obviously it was because it was on tonight's agenda. One person jumped me in Walmart, and then I got a phone call from somebody else. So this is, this is a valid topic.
Yeah. Gee.
We bring our own trash and we compost at home as well. So I don't know the answer to this. Do trash haulers take compost if they're coming to pick up your trash? Do they pick up your compost as well?
I don't think there are many that do that.
Well, TAM.
We only have.
Casella does it. Yeah. TAM does, or Casella.
I think Casella might be one of the few.
And they charge.
But we only have like four licensed haulers that act in Bennington.
No, I was just, I asked the question because composting in your yard, I don't know, just appeals to me a whole lot more than letting my compost build up somewhere in my house or something. I don't know, that you can't just get rid of it on a daily basis if you wanted to. And if you have your trash picked up, if you're, if you're going to compost, it's even more. I'm assuming they're charging you more than if you weren't having them pick up your compost. And that's another disincentive to make people want to compost.
So there are two, but there are two things, so, or at least two things. One is the transfer station will take compost that you would not put in your backyard compost. So it will take meat, they don't care about meat, bones, cheese.
Cheese, okay.
Things that you would not put in your backyard compost. So otherwise, those things go in the trash. And that's apparent, that is legal. If you live in an apartment, or if you live in a house or duplex that you rent and the owner doesn't want you to have a compost bin, or you can't have a compost bin, then your choices are to either pay $1.25 a gallon.
Or not do it.
Or not do it. And so the disincentives are definitely there. So it just feels like the number of people that are probably declaring that they have So it just feels like the number of people that are probably declaring that they have compost in the backseat of their car is few, and we don't, we don't know, but, yeah, but if you don't declare it, they don't charge you. And I'd rather make it legal to go in with your compost than to have everyone just not declare it. Honestly. We do not want to encourage people to be deceitful.
What are other communities doing?
Most don't charge. We looked around the state, and most don't charge.
Okay.
Are you saying that most don't charge at their transfer station?
Right.
Yeah. So, but ours was an attempt to reduce a deficit that we were running in.
Well, I wouldn't say that. Casella owns the transfer station, Casella/TAM owns the transfer station. They, we contracted them to handle our solid waste and recycling. At the present time, recycling, the taxpayers of Bennington are subsidizing all of us who use the recycling. Those of us who have recycling collected at the house are also paying a fee to have that home. Everybody pays for the garbage, so much a bag, so much a ton, depending on how it's delivered to the transfer station. So, you know, it's a balancing act between what is it that the community should collectively pay for, and what is it that the user should pay for?
But wait, as opposed to cardboard, paper, plastic, and glass, which we all subsidize, compost goes where?
We made the decision that we would subsidize the cost.
Yeah, but where does the compost go? Where does the compost go?
I'm sorry?
When someone puts compost in that bucket, what does Casella do with that compost?
I have no idea.
You don't think it, turn it into soil?
I have no idea. They compost up at the back end of the transfer station. Whether it goes into that mix or not, I don't know.
Okay, but basically they handle it onsite, they don't pay to have it shipped.
I don't know.
Someplace else.
I don't know.
Huh. I don't know. I think we should, yes, Allison, please come up.
I wonder if a rep from Casella to come and speak with us might not be a bad idea.
I think it's not even worth it. I think if we collect $150 a year on compost.
I'm not going to pretend to be knowledgeable in this, but I have spent quite a bit of time researching it just online and asking questions when I could find anybody to ask. I believe that there is a composting facility that's run by the CWS that.
The county's Solid Waste Association?
Yes, thank you. I think that's who runs it. I think it's related to wastewater treatment, actually, but they do, there's a very sophisticated facility, I believe, from looking online, that chops the stuff up, which is, is necessary for the kind of, the municipal composting. It's actually more effective than backyard composting. They chop it up, and they have this entire process of turning it, and, which is how you get CO2 as opposed to methane, and they have an entire process of treating all of this so that it composts, and how long it takes depends a little bit, and it's shifted from what I was reading. But I think it is actually done at a facility, not at the transfer station, that it goes to a facility that's actually.
Like a Casella facility? Like a Casella facility?
That I can't tell you.
Like one in the state, or?
No, no, I think it's here, in Bennington County.
You're not, you're not talking about sludge composting, are you?
I believe, now again, I'm not, I'm just an amateur on this, and it's just from me getting on.
Well, I think we want to be careful not to put out facts that we aren't sure about then, so.
Absolutely. So I believe, from my research, that it is not, it may be at the facility that did sludge, but this is very specifically compost. It is different than sludge, from what I am able to tell.
All right, I think, I think we shouldn't, I think we shouldn't go.
I hear you.
I'm speculating.
Yeah, because that's, yeah, because we have a sludge composting facility, and it's very specific to sludge.
Yes, it is.
Yes, yes.
What I might suggest, thinking of people to find out more from, would be it's possible that the Bennington County Solid Waste may have some of this information. It's possible, that what is happening.
I don't want to overcomplicate this. Yes, I mean, I think finding out what we do with the compost would be good to know, but I think, I just want to not have this.
I'd also be curious to know what the revenue is for Casella on cardboard and glass and other things that they must sell.
Or is it at a loss? Are they making money anymore?
I would assume they're making money. We paid it, we paid to dump it.
For a while, they haven't been making money.
So they're not selling it, they're disposing of it?
Our contract with Casella originally started out to be, we would share in the profits. So the town was actually making money on recycling, which is one of the reasons we offered it for free.
Sure.
Over the last several years, when China and India backed out of the cardboard market, particularly because our cardboard was so messed up for handling improperly, composting is now a loss. We pay in the range.
Recycling, you mean, recycling that compost?
Yeah, recycling. We pay, I want to say it's 40 something thousand a year to recycle.
That opens up the whole question of what happens to that stuff if Casella can't find buyers.
Well, we used to dump it in other countries, yeah, we don't do that anymore, so. Okay, I don't know. So do we feel like we need more information, or do we feel like we can make a motion to rescind?
I think we're in the weeds a little bit.
We're way in the weeds.
I don't think it really matters. I think what it comes down to for me is the fact that it's the law that people are supposed to compost. Anything we can do to encourage people to do so is a good thing. I don't believe we can be possibly generating significant money at $1.25 a gallon, and I've seen the size of the buckets at the transfer station, they're not huge. There's already an impediment for people to have to actually drive their own stuff up to the transfer station. Adding an additional charge to it might just swing somebody the other way. And I think, I would, I would make the motion that we eliminate the compost fee.
I'll second that, thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Is that effective?
Thank you. If it can be.
It can't be. We'll make it at an appropriate time.
Okay. Can we give you a homework assignment?
Why not?
Sure. Can you, next time, tell us where and how the compost is dealt with?
Yes.
Thank you. And also find out how much.
Casella/TAM does operate a compost facility on lands leased from the town of Bennington at the rear of the facility.
Okay.
But they're handling mostly large contracted, large institutional deliveries that come into that facility. I would just imagine that if there is a small barrel of material.
It's just a garbage can full, yeah.
Then it would be probably handled out back, but I'll confirm that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Allison, yay. All right, so now we're going to move on to the next exciting topic, which is the brush fee at the transfer station.
Well, we dealt with it last week, gave you all the information. We are losing money on the handling of brush at the transfer station. We are taking it for free from most people, charging commercial individuals $120 a ton. It generated a total of $7,800 last year. We are paying anywhere in the range of $10,000 to $15,000 a year to get rid of the brush, even though we do use some of that material in our compost facility at the wastewater treatment plant. I am recommending that we move to a flat fee for two reasons. One, it'll move the line. Those of us, or those people who use the transfer station are often caught in long lines that go all the way out to Houghton Lane, and every time someone uses the scale, they have to transfer back into line to get weight on the way out. So there's weight on the way in, weight on the way out, that's how you determine how much they pay. It slows the process down, and unfortunately, some of our commercial haulers do try to not be quite truthful about where the material is coming from, and they try to argue that it's from their own property, not from a commercial customer, which also slows the process down and generally agitates the scale house operator, and it makes it very difficult for that individual. So I'm recommending that we move to a flat fee for commercial of $40 per load, and for a residential fee of either $5 or $10 a load, depending on how much money you wish to generate. At $5 per load, we estimate we'll generate about $10,500 a year. That's better than $7,800. At $10 per load for the residential fee, we'll generate about $16,000 a year, which will probably cover the cost of handling the brush. I ask that we establish a flat fee. I know that residential customers are going to be upset about it, but we would implement this at a time to be determined, probably at the beginning of a month or two out, so that people have time to prepare themselves. But we can't, unfortunately, the municipality can't go on subsidizing everybody's activities at their homes. Users should pay.
And you defined a load, so there was a lot of discussion about what happens if people have a bag of brush, which is sort of like a bag of leaves.
If people bring in two 30-gallon bags of brush, that not be charged as a load?
So a load is basically a pickup truck, the back of a pickup truck?
Something more than the truck of your car.
Yeah, okay, right. Questions?
Stu, did it, was it the case that people could go get mulch for free in the past, you know, after the?
They can pick up the chips, yes, for free.
Still?
Yes.
That's kind of counterintuitive, that you're charging people who want to dispose of debris that's going to turn into something that's free. I don't know, it's like if you're going to charge for, it's almost like you should charge for the mulch, not for the branches as they come into the transfer station.
Well, there aren't that many people that come and get the chipped material.
Okay.
One of the reasons being is that it's made up of wood that is diseased, rotted, and might not be ideal for mulching your gardens.
Well, yeah, but there's lots of other uses for mulch.
But some people do.
Yeah.
The numbers have dropped dramatically. We do use the lion's share of that now.
Right.
Because we are now composting our sewage sludges at the wastewater treatment facility. So, you know, I.
How much are we saving by using that? Did you have that figure?
Well, it costs, I don't know.
If you had to buy the mulch, I guess is what I'm saying.
We still have to pay to have it chipped. So the cost to the town is we pay someone with a huge grinder, tub grinder, to come in and grind up all the brush that's there. That's the cost. We then collect it, that which has left, the majority of it, and we take as much of it as we can to the transfer station. So we're getting a useful product out of it, we're getting a use out of what used to be waste, and it would just sit there and literally compost onsite. So I can't say we're saving anything, because it does cost us money to operate a compost facility, and the cost there is in electricity, transportation, those kinds of things. But at least we're reutilizing the material rather than wasting it.
Oh, I think that's great, yeah, I'm not arguing with that at all. The only, the other unintended consequence that I worry about is this is going to encourage more people to burn their brush piles in their backyards. And in my neighborhood, I can tell you, it's a problem. There are a few people in my neighborhood that are very allergic to smoke, and it's really, really unpleasant for a few people. And I worry that if you can't bring branches and brush to the transfer station for free, people are going to choose to burn it in their own backyards.
That costs them money as well. You need to get.
To do illegally, yeah.
Well, right, but it's a whole lot cheaper to buy one burn permit for the season than to take.
I suppose it depends on the amount of brush you're generating.
Right, right. I don't know, I'm struggling with this one.
Can I ask a question? Did it make sense, I think, I want to make sure I understand your proposal, Stu. Stu, you're suggesting the commercial flat fee of $40 per load, but it's currently at $60 a load, if you did the math?
That's what it averages out to at 120 a ton.
So you're proposing that we lower the commercial fee?
Yes.
Do you see an advantage to that?
Yes. We don't have as many people fighting with the scale house operator about whether it's a commercial load or not.
Gotcha.
Can't this be fixed by changing the process rather than changing the fee structures?
How do you change the process?
Well, you had said that they were considering putting in another scale.
Yes, but you're talking $100,000 or more.
I think Casella can afford it.
Casella might argue differently with you, but a new scale, because we asked the question, and we were willing to do some of the pavement work to help and some of the digging work to help, but a new scale is over $100,000 to install. And yes, could they consider that over time, if that's what the direction we'd like them to go? Yes. Is it going to increase the fee that folks pay to get rid of material at the transfer station? More than likely.
So what, can you just talk about the reduction from $60 to $40? That feels like that's a price point that is going to matter to commercial haulers? And then, because.
I would hope so.
Okay, and, I don't know, I mean, Jean, I was feeling okay with two garbage bags of twigs. We don't charge for leaves, the cost here is the chipper.
Yes.
Is the cost.
This is for brush only.
And so it means that backyard, you know, doing backyard trimming.
Or a branch falls down in your yard, which we had happen.
Yeah.
Lots of branches.
It increases the cost of maintaining the property.
We do need to cover the cost, so.
If it's, right now, $60 per load on the average, and we're going to change it to $40, and that's flat fee, do they have to use the scales at all anyways?
Well, traditionally, people come across the scales because that's where they pay. But you're right, could we establish a different route in? That remains to be seen. That would be something we'd have to work on.
Or just say that you've got brush, you're a commercial hauler, and you've got brush, and it's $60 a load, and they don't have to give you weight? Because you're not doing it by tonnage?
Well, that's an average, though. I mean, it, you know, the size of the vehicles, the trailers, whatever the haulers are using to move that material determines what their cost is when it's by weight.
That's not what you're suggesting, though. You're suggesting it's $40 per load.
That's right.
Whatever the load is for commercial haulers, so I bring my biggest truck full of stuff.
Yeah.
So why not charge them $60 per load like they're averaging now?
I'm asking for a flat fee schedule. If you wish to make that motion at $60 a load, I'm not going to argue with that.
So if we did $60 per load for commercial, we could probably not charge backyard pickup trucks, anything, right?
We'll generate the same amount of money that we're generating now. If the cost is averaging $60 a load based on the number of haulers, and that's 130 haulers over the course of a year, 130 loads generated the $7,800. Now, I know there are probably more. Now, I know there are probably more commercial loads coming through there, but the people are not being truthful. And we know that probably, in my conversations with Casella's folks, that haulers, the commercial haulers, maybe 5% to 10% of the amount of brush comes through that gate.
So what you're really trying to do is capture pickup trucks or larger of brush? Could you come up with, sorry, were you going to say something?
Go ahead.
Oh. That if you're a commercial hauler, that you have to have some sort of identification? You know, we're not allowed, anyone's not allowed to use the transfer station unless you have a sticker in your car.
All commercial haulers have a commercial hauler license.
So who's sneaking in? The homeowners?
Commercial haulers. Commercial haulers are coming in and claiming that it's from their own property, that it's not a commercial load. Yes, I have the name of my truck on the, my name of my business on the side of my truck, but it's not a commercial load, and you can't prove otherwise. And it generates into an argument. And it shouldn't, but it does. So, I mean, I'll go back to, if Gary, if Gary wants to make a motion that we charge $60 a load, flat fee, I'm fine with that.
I may have two other questions before we get there. How long has it been the 120 a ton for commercial haulers?
I'm going to guess at least a year, perhaps more.
So fairly recent, though. This isn't a 10-year-old rate?
I don't, you know, frankly, I don't know, because it's a huge fee schedule, so I don't look at every single one.
I don't, I'm not surprised. The other point I want to make is that we're currently budgeted to live in this deficit, right? We're in a fiscal year where we budgeted to be in this deficit. I only say that because I wonder if this is a bigger situation that we ought to take apart more closely before we move on anything. That's my thought.
If you take a look at our budget for solid waste and how the community handles it, we budget a contracted fee with the Bennington County Soil Waste Alliance. We have a contract fee with Casella Tiam for disposing of our trash, because we also bring trash from the downtown and from the barrels to the dump. We pay to have our brush chipped. We, I think that, well, that's about it. And we pay for recycling. We pay for the community's recycling, which on a given month probably runs in the, I'm going to say, $3,000 to $5,000 a month, depending on the month. Winter months, it tends to drop off, but it's fairly expensive.
When you say, when you say community recycling, that's public disposal of recyclable materials?
Benton residents and Woodford residents, because of our contract with Woodford, get to recycle at no cost.
That's interesting, okay.
What do we want to do to divert things from the trash?
So if I'm looking at this, Stu, you said we're generating 78, 80 now. We're spending anywhere from 10,000 to 15,000. So we've got deficit there of anywhere between $2,120 to $7,120, right? Based on the numbers that you put here. You know, if we squared that across per household, so we're looking at, what, $0.35 to $1.18 a year per, assuming 6,000 or so households?
Yeah, yeah.
I looked, I spent more time than I ever want to spend again looking at fees for other transfer stations around the state. And the one thing I did learn is that none of them seem to agree on anything. There seems to be no one correct answer to the solution.
Speak up.
It is on.
You just need to speak up.
I'm just, the thing I'm struggling with the most here is that this isn't a predictable expense. It could be, when I, I know basically how much garbage I'm going to produce every month and what my fee is going to be to get rid of that. But for people out there that may want to dispose of their brush properly, if we have a big storm like we just had, and suddenly they've got two truckloads of brush laying down in their yard, they couldn't have budgeted for that. And so they're going to have to slurp, most likely, seek an alternative method for getting rid of it. So I struggle with that a little bit. I'm just not sure, I'm not sure the losses are enough that we need to be making as huge a deal of it right now that we are.
So maybe we need to, maybe we need to think about this another, at least another meeting, and the questions, the questions that we have that would help us figure this out is, yeah, the unpredictability, the, it's really, this spread over households, it's a very small amount, but in terms of those that don't have woods in the back of their house where they can dump all their brush, they're the ones that are going to have to suffer here. But we do need to, but we do need to make up the difference. Stu, I don't know if you can, if there are any other, if looking around at other transfer stations, or picking Tom's brain for that to see what he learned?
There is absolutely zero commonality. Every town seems to come up with their own solution. Some towns pay for you to get a transfer station sticker at the beginning, and then you pay for virtually nothing. Some have a fee per pickup truck load. Many have no fees at all. I mean, it just seems to be all over the map. But one thing that is difficult is there's only so many towns that are similarly sized to Bennington to get a real comparison. And none of those seem to agree with each other either, so it's tough.
I'm feeling like if we could solve the issue with the scale and having to go through and then come back through to get reweighed, to me, it's not worth $2,000, $3,000 if we could solve that. I'm getting the feeling like that's maybe a bigger problem than the small deficit that it is. So I'm stuck on trying to figure out a way to fix the process. Like, could there be specific hours where commercial haulers come through, and only commercial haulers come through? I don't, I don't know. I don't, haven't thought about it nearly as deeply as Tom has, and I've done zero research other than I can tell you how it feels. Like, I'm really angry if I'm going to have to start paying for brush. Is $2,000, $3,000 worth making me and God knows how many other people angry? I don't think it is. But that doesn't solve the issue with the process. And I don't want the people that have to work in the, whatever that's called, you call waystation, to be harassed and upset. That's not acceptable.
All right, so let's, can we table this and rethink?
I would be curious, I would be curious to know, Stu, when that commercial rate last was increased.
Other questions, specific questions that, Jim? Other specific questions that will help us not have this same conversation next meeting?
I'm telling you, don't mess with my brush.
All right, all right. So let's move on to manager's report.
Okay, I have only one action item for you this evening, and it has to do with the lead service line removal bond. We have completed contracts one, two, and I believe we're in the process of working towards three. This is all completely 100% reimbursed by the state of Vermont through use of EPA funds. So this loan amount currently proposed is $10.55 million. It requires a motion by the board to accept the loan, to waive the reading of the resolution, and to sign in several places on the general obligation bond.
Any discussion? No? All right. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to circulate this. There are three tags. One is for the chair only, the other two are for the entire board to sign.
Perfect.
And the clerk and the treasurer will sign another time.
Great.
Several other things that have come up just in the interim between our meetings. There is a public meeting scheduled for Thursday evening at this location by the Department of Environmental Conservation, state of Vermont, September 28th at 7:00 PM. As many of you may know, PFOA or PFAS have been found in wells south of Route 9, both to the east of the community and to the south of the community. And so the DEC wants to come to the community, talk a little bit about what their findings are and what their steps forward might be. More than likely, some of these homes may have access to the municipal water system, so we will be looking once again to the state of Vermont to find a source of funding to help pay for those installations. But the state will detail what it plans to do, and that is, you know, deliver bottled water to those wells or those homes that have in excess of the parts per trillion in their wells. And there are a number, and there are some that are borderline as well. So I imagine that the homeowners are interested in what the next steps are, much as we first did when the first PFOAs were discovered in the north Bennington area, and that ballooned into a rather massive project. So more on this, but that is coming to us here. Just a quick note that hydrant flushing will begin on October 9th and run through October 20th. Once again, if your water is discolored after it's flushed, run your cold water until it clears. Please do not use your hot water, because you will be sucking the silt into your hot water tanks, which would not be good for your system. You'll know when they start and when they move through your neighborhood. We'll have a continuing public announcements on those. They'll be on the web as well as press releases and paper. Several other things that have come to the board in the past, there were some south stream road speed issues. We are looking to establish a school zone around the Bee Street School. It is now a school once again, is handling students on a daily basis. So we will be posting a 25 mile an hour school zone on either side of that building for a particular distance to be established. Signs have been ordered, so that is underway. You've all been watching the Riverwalk update. It's moving along very smoothly. That's being done by town staff. Multiple departments are working together to get that project done. Very brief announcement, the town of Bennington, after a competitive process, is changing its banking institution. We have been with Chittenden Peoples and M&amp;T Bank forever. We are moving to TD Bank for our municipal services. And this is occasioned by some of the service lags that occurred when M&amp;T took over and have continued, unfortunately. And it's further complicated by the fact that M&amp;T is closing their downtown branch and moving their banking to the Northside Drive, Coker Drive area, and then furthermore reducing the hours that they'll be open. So it's a combination of things, but from our perspective, TD Bank does offer some very, very competitive rates, and they offer all of the services that we've come to be used to as a municipality. And many other municipalities we are finding are already with TD Bank and are very happy with their services, so we're doing that. One question that has been asked continuously by an individual that didn't show up tonight to ask the question. We have reached out to the deputy commissioner of DEC, Department of Environmental Conservation, to find out how we can work with the state to get that building on Benmont Avenue torn down. There are contaminants within the building. We can't take it on under current rules and regulations the state has without accepting liability for the cleanup, and obviously, we don't intend to do that. The property is essentially abandoned. The corporation is no longer in business, so there is a difficulty in going after former owners to try to recover expenses. So we're hoping that Deputy Commissioner Schmelzer can help us find a way to at least get us in there without the liability, to at least knock the building down and get rid of the material. It is an eyesore. It is a danger. We're coming into a second winter. We don't know whether the structural capability will continue to hold. And we have that one wall standing, not quite freestanding, but almost, and we're very concerned about it. So we share the residents concerned about that. And then the last piece, Jonah kind of stole my thunder on the Ben High project. I think it is essential that we understand that the Ben High project not only provides necessary housing units, but it also will provide a Meals on Wheels program and a senior center program that is at least twice and potentially three times the size of what is available to them now. I know that the people who use the senior center are very happy there, but it is limited in the numbers of people that it can serve. And we hope to be able to grow that program and invite more people over 50, because that's who we consider seniors, people over 50 into the facility, because we'll be able to offer a greater number of programs. And many of those programs that cannot be done within the center themselves will be able to be available in the other spaces that the Y will manage for us, including the gymnasium and several other locations in the Ben High project. It is a very, very worthwhile project. I think it's, it's been wholly vetted. I don't argue with Nancy that when we first started, we all had a lot of assumptions. But I think as we've moved through this project over the last couple of years, those assumptions have been proved out, have been detailed. We now know where the costs are going and what the costs are. We know that there are additional funding opportunities for the private developer, Hail Resources, that we are working with, and those too will continue to be available to the public as they become known and are available to the project. And I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question of Stu? Stu, at TD Bank, is there a local government banking officer? Is there somebody in town?
I don't believe he's in town, no. Much as our individual that we work with at M&amp;T Bank is not a Bennington resident.
Well, I ask you this because as treasurer of the school district, we also have the same concerns. So we're looking at the same options that the town did.
We found the individual who is the leader for their government operations to be incredibly forthcoming.
So you formed a relationship?
Yes.
Good.
Yes, and very, very responsive to our request for...
I may come in and pick Joni's brain at some point about that.
This would be probably the better one to pick.
Thank you.
I have a quick question too, Stu, and you may not be able to answer it. I was reading the report from the police department. Am I reading this correctly that there are seven candidates in the process during, in the training process at the moment?
There are currently four.
Right, it says all four.
Four at the academy at the present time. We have an additional three that we are proposing to make job offers to, provided that everything checks out. And hopefully, they would be then in the academy in February of next year.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I read that right. That's good news.
Yes.
It's great news. It's great news. And can I ask, is there a press release going out to help people know about the DEC meeting, the PFAS meeting this Thursday?
That should be out as of today.
Okay.
We just received the language from Richard Spees at the DEC. Jonah was going to be putting it up as of today.
Okay, so we'll have it out. Okay. Perfect. Okay. Great. All right, so upcoming agenda is the skate park. The group working on the skate park is going to update us at the next... The group working on the skate park is going to update us at the next meeting, which is great. And it sounds like we'll probably, we're going to try and have the manager from the Agency of Human Resources, or Human Services, sorry. Yeah, so Adam Sanzik here. Anything else that we know is going to be on the agenda?
Transfer station fees.
What?
Brush fees.
Brush fees? Oh my gosh!
I will report back on brush.
Okay. You're boycotting? No. Okay, all right. All right, well, good. That seems like enough. Let's try not to add anything to that meeting. All right, other business. Gary, no? Jim?
The Bennington community market is under management, and I encourage folks to come by and let Natasha and I tell you what plans are and get a look at them. We're pretty ambitious and looking forward to growing.
Great. Thank you. All right, Jim?
I just want to thank LL Bean for bringing their boot, car, truck thing to Bennington on Saturday and Sunday. It was hilarious to see that thing sitting there on Depot Street.
Nothing? Okay, all right. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, second? Okay, you seconded? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for staying to the bitter end.